To item three.
Is it appropriate this time to ask Kathy a question? Is it?
Sure.
Can I ask? Related to what she said. So regarding the recommended texts that you just mentioned. So we are saying that with this packet, we are not really looking at or approving these text lists. There's a list that's included on page thirty-one, for example, Mr. Popham's Penguin. I mean, we're not talking— is that what you're talking about?
Well, the appendices, I think, were not forwarded by the Commission. No, I was referring to some preferatory materials that were part of the released document from the National Common Core writers. But our concern in speaking with our attorneys is that because that preferatory material is not standards and we're not certain what legal impact they would have if you accepted those as part of the standards, we're requesting that you accept only the standards themselves. Does that help?
Somewhat, because what I'm referring to on text illustrating the complexity—it is part of the package, it's not appendix. And you have a list for schools, for K-5, and you have a list for 612 on the books we're supposed to have. So are we adopting that? No?
Let me take a try at that in just a second, because I don't—I—this is an important question, but I don't want us to go down that hole this way. Thanks, Kathy. So let's take up item three. Deb Sigmund is going to introduce the item, and then we will hear from the Commission and commissioners. After that, board members, I think it would be appropriate for us to ask questions of the commissioners before we go into public comment. I know there are members of the public who would like to give us their guidance, and we'll appreciate that. But I do think, Yvonne, that clarifying what it is that we're being asked to do today and what it is that we are not being asked to do today is absolutely essential. And I want to reserve the right to kind of break in at the appropriate moment to try to separate those two things. But as we do go into this item, I want to echo something that I know the superintendent believes, and it was in the recommendation, and Kathy Gaither also mentioned it—that this is a historic moment, but it is not something new for us. That California led the way in the development of standards-based reform. And this is an opportunity today, thanks to the good work of the Academic Content Standards Commission, for us to once again lead the nation in developing, promulgating, and building curriculum and assessments around the highest quality standards in the land. And if we were to go ahead with this, as I hope we do, we will indeed be leaders in the coalition of the most advanced states in guiding the nation toward a coherent set of standards. So Deb, all yours.
Thank you, President Mitchell, and good morning to you and Superintendent O'Connell and board members and Executive Director Schweitzer. Welcome. I'm here to open and introduce the item for consideration of the California Academic Content Standards Commission's recommendations to adopt the Common Core standards, including California-specific standards. And in particular, I want to provide to you Superintendent O'Connell's recommendation with regard to the Common Core. Undersecretary Gaither gave a beautiful background in terms of how we are here today, so I will cut that a bit short, but only to say that, as she mentioned, the superintendent, President Mitchell, and the governor sent forth a letter in the fall—pardon me, in May of 2009, wanting to be part of the Common Core effort. And the superintendent, at that point, as did the other authors of the letter, wanted to make sure that the standards would not be watered down, that we would maintain our rigorous set of standards. That was obviously incredibly important to the superintendent. And then, of course, SBX 51 authorized the California Academic Content Standards Commission, which met during the months of June and July, three meetings, six days, and, as Undersecretary Gaither mentioned, long hours and very hard work to get to the point where we are today, and sent forth a document, including the standards, but additional text, to which I think Secretary Gaither was referring. So the superintendent recommends that this board adopt the Common Core standards, the recommended additional standards, and the recommendations as acted upon by the Commission. He also recommends that you direct the California Department of Education to submit an implementation plan and a timeline for the implementation of the standards that is consistent with the Elementary, Secondary, and Education Act, and that be brought forward to you in a future meeting. That is the superintendent's recommendation. I'm happy to take questions, and if there are none, I'm going to introduce the next speaker.
Let's keep going.
All righty. It's my pleasure to introduce Sue Stickel, the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Interventions at the Sacramento County Office of Education. Sue also served as the project director of the Commission. Sue?
Well, good morning. Good morning, President Mitchell, Superintendent O'Connell, board members, and congratulations, Executive Director Schweitzer. My name is Sue Stickel, and my day job is to work at the Sacramento County Office of Education. My 24/7 job for the past six weeks has been to serve as the project director for the Academic Standards Commission. And as most things, I am grateful for the opportunity. It's my task this morning to provide you with just a brief amount of background about the Common Core standards, give you a little history, give you a little bit of background to help base your decision. A little over a year ago, the words "Common Core standards" really were not—I was thinking about it last night—we didn't even utter those words. But now they've become part of our everyday work and everyday vocabulary. The Council of Chief State School Officers and the National Governors Association Center for Best Practices began work on the Common Core standards last summer. The focus of the standards was ensuring that our students are college and career-ready when they graduate from high school. With this in mind, these organizations, along with experts throughout the country, developed the college and career-ready standards for English Language Arts and Mathematics, and they were completed last fall, 2009. As the experts continued to work on the K-12 content standards that were ultimately released on June 2nd, they used this college and career-ready work as a beacon, and they embedded these standards in their future work. In doing this work, the development team could have easily taken all of the state standards, the 50 states, and identified what they had in common and called it good. But we all know that's not a really good choice, and so they have done a very—a great deal of thoughtful work with a lot of feedback over the past year. The overarching goals of these standards are to ensure that our students are meeting college and work expectations, that they're prepared to succeed in our global economy and society, and that they're provided with rigorous content and applications of knowledge through higher-order thinking skills. The standards build upon the strengths and the lessons of current state standards, and it is quite evident the California standards had a huge role in this area and that they are—that the standards that you see before you today have been well-informed by research. In developing the standards, four groups of experts were involved: an advisory group, a standards development work group that included experts that were involved in developing California standards, Dr. Wu, Professor Emeritus from Berkeley, and Dr. Louisa Moats; an expert feedback group, and a validation committee that ensured that the standards met the development criteria. Five California experts were members of this group. On June 2nd, the final product was released. To date, nearly 30 states have adopted the standards. So let's just briefly talk about English Language Arts and Mathematics now. It's important to note that three parts of California standards were used: reading foundations, the grade-by-grade standards, and the focus from our 2008 framework on vocabulary and writing. Ways that the Common Core have improved on our current standards are as follows: a greater balance between literature and the analysis of informational text; an systematic, almost stair-step development of reading comprehension; a focus on text complexity, which is the heart of failures of many of our students as they're—as for college readiness; reading and writing across the curriculum; and a focus on writing arguments and drawing evidence from sources. In the area of mathematics, they also use California standards in their development. The college and career standards in mathematics served as guideposts for the Common Core. They were built with focus on preparing students also for success in Algebra I. The math Common Core are a balanced combination of procedure and understanding. The design of the standards feature the hierarchical nature of content with clarity and specificity, and they focus on conceptual understanding of key ideas. They travel by grade level in grades K through 8, and then there are sets of standards grouped in conceptual clusters in high school, such as algebra, functions, geometry. But the Common Core in mathematics also feature the standards of mathematical practice. This is expertise that standards seek to develop in their students, things like reasoning abstractly and quantitatively, and making sense of problems and persevering in solving them. In conclusion, the Common Core standards that were released on June 2nd are rigorous. They form a coherent set of standards, and they prepare students for college and career and are sensitive to the needs of English learners and the students with disabilities. And so now it is my great pleasure to introduce Greg Geeding, who served as the Chair of the Standards Commission. He did incredible work, and in three short meetings—they seemed incredibly long, but they were short—the time was short. He did yeoman's work, and he's here to talk to you about what we're bringing forward to you today.
Thank you, Sue, for an extraordinary job. Good point, Greg.
Indeed, thank you very much, Sue. President Mitchell, Superintendent O'Connell, board members, Executive Director Schweitzer, and distinguished guests, thank you for allowing me to participate in this review of the Academic Standards Commission's recommendation of new English Language Arts and Mathematics content standards. The recommendation is based, as Sue told you, on the National Common Core standards released June 2nd by the National Governors Association and the Council of Chief State School Officers. This morning, my intent is to provide you some background information on the Commission and its work, and then to highlight some key additions to the Common Core that the Commission included in its recommendation. For the most part, the Commission-proposed additions reflect material that actually appears in or was inspired by the current California ELA and mathematics standards. At the outset, I must praise the individuals who served on the Commission and their appointing authorities. These individuals brought a wealth of diverse backgrounds and experiences to the Commission's charge, and they went about their work with diligence, with intelligence, and with passion. There were times that the passion became a challenge, given the pressure of the ticking clock, but in retrospect, I'm glad that passion ran high. The journey we shared, even through objections and amendments and points of order and motions to postpone, fundamentally visited places of principle and belief about what students should learn and be able to do, and visiting such places as those is not time wasted. These commissioners are men and women of substance who did their very best for the students of our state. I must also take a minute to praise the outstanding staff who supported the Commission under the able leadership of Project Director Sue Stickel. When we initially thought about this effort, we envisioned perhaps, oh, five or six staff. Well, last week, I prepared thank-you letters to 21 individuals who contributed to the staffing effort. I literally ran out of superlatives to describe their work over our month of togetherness, but suffice it to say that they were magnificent. And as for Sue, as Superintendent O'Connell well knows, her talents and abilities long ago transitioned from mere stories to mythical proportions, and with this effort, she truly transcends into the stuff of legend. We cannot thank her enough. Now, some of the details. There were 21 commissioners, pointed for the most part in early June, about the same time the National Common Core was released in its final form. We met for six days, two in mid-June, two in early July, and then we wrapped it up on July 14th and 15th. We provided many opportunities for the public to access our meetings. Our in-person audience generally ranged from 20 to 40 each day, and between 200 and 300 unique individuals viewed our proceedings via online streaming almost every meeting day, and we entertained public input frequently. We learned about the National Common Core from David Coleman and Jason Zimba, who were assigned to assist California as official emissaries from the NGA and CCSSO. Our staff did presentations on the existing California standards, the process of international benchmarking, ways of determining college and career readiness, and, most importantly, the crosswalks between California standards and the National Common Core. We also had individual presentations by a supporter and a dissenter on the National Common Core for ELA and then again for mathematics. In short, Commission members embarked upon their deliberations with a fair and balanced and substantial informational base. A key decision was to include essentially the whole of the National Common Core in the Commission's recommendation. Some had argued that the statute actually allowed something less than 100% of the Common Core standards, but the Commission did not pursue that consideration. What the Commission did do was take very seriously its authority to recommend a package of additions to the National Common Core. Our staff suggested additions, some were accepted, some were accepted with modifications, some were not. Also, some of our members suggested additions. Again, some were accepted, accepted with modifications, and some were not. Commissioners were guided in their decisions by a mental checklist of criteria, including whether the proposed changes were substantive, addressed perceived gaps, were defensible to practitioners, kept intact the original sense of the standards to which they would be attached, and helped ensure rigor. Ultimately, the package of ELA additions was accepted without dissent. However, the package of additions in mathematics, which thus became the vote on the final recommendation as a whole, passed by a two-thirds vote, with two members voting against and the remainder declining to vote. So clearly, the vast majority of the Commission enthusiastically endorses this package and urges the State Board to adopt it. Now, let's take a look at just three key proposed additions in the area of English Language Arts. Arguably, the most significant addition is a strand related to formal presentations in the speaking and listening domain. This strand appears in each grade level from grade one through grades 11, 12. The strand cycles through different types of presentations, including poetry recitation, narratives, and informational speaking. See, for example, page 21, where the strand begins in grade one with memorization and recitation of poems, rhymes, and songs. Nearby, you'll see the strand continue in grade two, and then on page 23, it wends its way through grade five. And then on pages 46 to 48, you see the strand continue in grades 6 through 12. For example, one example being grades 9, 10, which is page 47 and 48, there's delivery of an informative or explanatory presentation, as well as a reprise of formal recitations such as poetry. A second area in English Language Arts is in the language domain in grades 2 through 4. Standards are added related to handwriting or penmanship. See, for example, page 24, where creating readable documents in legible print is added to grade 2, and then on page 26, writing fluidly and legibly in cursive or joined italics is added to grade 4. Third, I want to point out an additional footnote related to foundational skills in kindergarten, which appears on page 14. The footnote relates to major vowels and short and long vowel sounds. The Commission was actually advised while we were meeting that this footnote would be added to the National Common Core, so basically, we helped you out by incorporating the new footnote among our additions. Now, various other Language Arts additions, I'll just touch on briefly: following simple and then progressively complex directions in the early grades, providing more specificity about the use of and differentiation among pronouns, thesis statements in informational texts, alternate word choices, archetypes, one of my personal favorites, and more specific references to career development documents such as business letters. Turning next to mathematics, I'll again highlight just three of the Commission-proposed additions. By far, the most noteworthy addition relates to Algebra I, which begins at page 45. As presented to you, this Algebra I package represents one of two options for mathematics content at grade 8, the other being the Grade 8 Common Core itself, which begins on page 51. The Grade 8 Common Core actually incorporates a generous portion of geometry as preparation for algebra in high school. Now, thanks to Undersecretary Kathy Gaither, I'll skip a major part of the detail that I was going to provide about Algebra I, but I want to highlight a couple of things that were very important to the Commission. First, based on local decisions, nothing, nothing in this package prohibits this Algebra I package of—to be—from being presented either as a traditional one-year course, as a two-year Algebra I course, or as a series of multiple-year integrated mathematics courses. The Algebra I package includes the Grade 8 Common Core, along with some Common Core high-school mathematics, and parts of California's existing Algebra I content. And the other highlight I wanted to mention was that—the most important one, which is that either of these two options provides all students in grade 8 ample time in high school to complete the advanced mathematics coursework necessary for admission to a four-year college. Now, a second change in mathematics brings down from grade 8 to grade 7, and similarly, from grade 7 to grade 6, some of the content standards related to number sense and geometry. Examples of this can be seen on pages 36 and 41. The Commission felt that presenting this content earlier helps strengthen students' algebra readiness by grade 8. A third key change added considerable material from California's existing standards to the Common Core in high-school mathematics, including California's standards for calculus and for AP probability and statistics, which were added in their entirety. I will just briefly note that additions in earlier grades included clearer or stronger references, including such matters as concepts of time, relating time to events, counting by multiples, estimation strategies, verifying reasonableness, English units of measure, use of the number line, and distinguishing among shapes. Now, as I wrap up my presentation, I would like to leave you with these two thoughts, assuming that you will decide to adopt the Commission's recommendation, which you are strongly encouraged to do. First, the success or failure of this venture will depend to a great extent on the substance and the adequacy of the implementation plan. If you leave this meeting today thinking that you have done a great thing, you will be sadly mistaken if the implementation plan is skimpy or underfunded. As Dr. Michael Kurst of Stanford University reminds us, the content standards, while quite visible, are really the easiest part of a standards-based system, creating opportunity to learn. What implementation is all about is the most difficult. The implementation plan needs to address many complicated issues surrounding the transition from our current content standards to the new ones, including refinements to the new standards that you may find necessary, as well as future changes to the Common Core that will inevitably be coming along; framework development, and the creation of a new ELD standards document; instructional material selection; professional development; changes in teacher preparation; and modification of assessments. Second, and perhaps more importantly, you must ensure that this process of transition does not result in any loss of integrity or continuity in the system of accountability that California has constructed over the past dozen years, much under the leadership of Superintendent Jack O'Connell. And those developments have been with the considerable investment of time and money, not only by the state, but by local agencies of government as well. Be alert to excuses that begin—well, because the content standards changed—you really must not allow these new standards to become a rationale to justify declines in achievement or evasion of responsibility. If these new content standards are the keys to a shiny new car with all the latest features, then please be sure that the car is consistently well-maintained, treated with respect, and always driven sensibly. Thank you. Where do I go next?
You do, and we get to thank you.
I—
So Greg, that—
I know we have commissioners in the audience who would like to add comments as well, so—
And I think that would be great, and if you don't mind, I'd love you to introduce them and help us out with this next part, Greg. But before you do, I want to thank you not only for those comments, which I think are extraordinarily good guides for us members as we take this up, but for your incredible leadership of the Commission, doing an impossible task in an impossible timeline with extraordinary professionalism and great grace. So, thank you so much.
Well, it was a pleasure to be associated with these terrific individuals. I enjoyed that part tremendously.
Great. Well, if you wouldn't mind introducing us to some of the commissioners, and we could hear from them.
I will be happy to do that. I hadn't anticipated you doing that. We should probably proceed alphabetically, but—
That makes good sense to me. Or just volunteers from the front of the room to the back.
Let's begin with a very active commissioner in the area of mathematics, Commissioner Scott Ferrand, a professor at Sacramento State. Scott?
Thank you so much, Scott, for your work.
Well, thank you. I think I get a place in heaven, don't I?
You do.
Because I agree with what has been said. It's been said very well, and I don't need to take much time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, are you surprised?
Clearly hadn't anticipated, Scott, being pretty— Clearly hadn't anticipated Scott being, uh, pretty... I'd also like to introduce Commissioner Pat Sabo, who helped out, uh, at one point in time, uh, chairing temporarily our commission.
I loved every moment of it.
Thank you so much, Pat.
I'm going to have that place in heaven right next to Scott, and, um, at this point, I agree with everything that has been said, and, um, will come up if I disagree.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And now, I'd like to introduce another very active Commissioner, Commissioners Zev Werman.
And I think Commissioner Werman and Commissioner Evers are going to come together.
And Commissioner Bill Evers.
So, President Mitchell, Superintendent O'Connell, board members. I'm Bill Evers. I'm, uh, at Hoover Institution at Stanford. This is Palo Alto businessman Zev Werman. I have five quick points to make. First of all, the K-7 mathematics preparation is inadequate in these standards, as they are before you. They are not going to be prepared to take algebra in grade eight. The algebra in grade eight course is overstuffed and unteachable. It is two years combined in one. It is a double-dose course, seventy-four standards instead of the normal thirty to thirty-five. Second point, minorities and low-income students under our current standards have been doing well. They've been doubling, tripling, and quadrupling, depending on which demographic you're looking at, their success rates at algebra in eighth grade. They've been catching up with other students. This adoption, if you make it, will damage severely the success. Point three, this is a major public policy shift that you're undertaking today in this decision. It's going to have a serious effect, a disparate impact, on minorities and other disadvantaged children. I think you have a moral and a legal obligation to have held regional hearings on the completed project. And in the handout that I have put before you, I give you the statutory passage that says that you must hold regional hearings. Fourth point, there's an experimental geometry matter in the standards pertaining to similar and congruent triangles. So just to refresh your minds, remember side angle, side, angle, side, angle, and all those sorts of things. So, there's a Russian mathematician. His name is, uh, Andrei Nikolayev Kolmogorov, and he invented this method that's being proposed. And he tried it in an elite, gifted and talented boarding school in Russia. And, uh, here's what his student wrote in a famous memorial essay on this Russian mathematician. This is from his student, uh, Ti, Vladimir, Vladimir Tikomirov. It has to be honestly said that these ideas are unacceptable, unsuitable for acceptance into math schools. Okay? So this is pertaining to the thing that you, if you vote for this, are going to be imposing on the California students. And my colleague, Scott Ferrand, from the Commission, said during the deliberations that this was the most worrisome thing that he found in the Common Core standards. Final point, I would pose a challenge to all the other speakers that come before you, from the CTA, from the California Federation of Teachers, from the California Mathematics Council, and other presenters. Do you regard this algebra in eighth-grade package as teachable, as doable, for the sixty percent of students that we succeed, that we have in our algebra in eighth grade now, and even for the numbers of success we have now? Sixty percent, can they take this double-dose course? If you're okay with that mathematics program, my second question, how do you regard the deprivation of opportunity to minorities and low-income students? And, board members, I ask you, as you listen to any of these presenters, answer these two questions, about the overstuffed and about the disparate impact on minorities and low-income children. Are they being forthcoming in their answers? Are they being evasive? Are they not answering? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you for your extraordinary work on the Commission. Thank you, Zev.
And next, I'd like to call up Commissioner Jim Lanitch.
Good morning. President Mitchell, Superintendent O'Connell, uh, board members. I was an inner-city schoolteacher for a long time for Los Angeles Unified in the riot recovery area. My wife taught in the poorest square mile of the United States for most of her teaching career. I worked teaching and learning family. I went on to become a bureaucrat. I led, uh, Los Angeles County Office of Education, uh, programs for curriculum instruction for ten years. I worked in the hundred lowest-performing schools of Los Angeles County. Uh, I went on to represent the business community for eight years in raising student academic achievement and closing the achievement gap. And I currently serve as the Director of the California State University Center to close the achievement gap. Simple message, the absolute vast majority of the members on this Commission have taught kids. They were excited. They liked what they saw. They improved upon it, and they're really looking forward to getting more kids to grade level than we've ever gotten in our state before. They put before you a recommendation that I think is strong and well-deserved. I appreciate your time that you've given to listen to us all today, and I am just really looking forward to getting the job done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
And, uh, next, I'd like to invite up Commissioner Mark Freethy, who teaches mathematics in Elk Grove Unified.
I was not, um, exactly prepared to do this, but, uh, I'm happy to be here. This was a great honor, uh, to be on this Commission and to have some input. Uh, I'm excited. I'm excited because in a few days, I get to start my thirty-fourth year of teaching. And, um, I'm excited, when I looked at these standards, um, the grassroots, that when I talked to people across the state, especially elementary school teachers, and I told them what I was involved in, they were really excited that, that we could have some standards that they could focus on, um, because they continued to say, "There's too much." And so, when we went through these standards, the, the practitioners unanimously were very, very supportive, that this can work. The people that have been doing this, we've been preparing kids for algebra for years and years with high success rates in some schools. The success rate that we have, sixty percent of students taking algebra, to me, is, is not the scorecard. It's how many students are successfully completing algebra and at what levels. That should be our scorecard. And if you look at the data, the data suggests that, that mo, the, the best thing we can do is prepare kids for Algebra I so that they're successful in taking Algebra I the first time they take it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, my buddy from here in my days with the California Department of Education, Dr. Deborah Keys.
Good morning, President Mitchell, members of the board. I'll be very, very brief. It was a privilege for me to work with the Commissioners who have brought forth their recommendation to you today. I, um, have been in education for a very long time and have great concerns about our students in California. Uh, I believe that what you have, um, been presented with in terms of the recommendation indeed is going to support and move our kids forward. Um, I want to also commend the work of, um, the, uh, staff of SCOE, who enabled us to really do the job that we needed to do on a very, very short timeline. It was a very short timeline, and we wouldn't have been able to do it as well as we did it without, uh, the support and the work of SCOE. So I want to publicly thank, um, Sue Stickel and her staff. And I thank you so very much for, uh, really, uh, taking into account the valuable work and time that the expert panel actually put into making this recommendation today, and I full-heartedly support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I, I regret to say there's a bit of tarnish on, on the legend, because I had been, and I'd been told that Deborah Keys was the last, but there is one more Commissioner. Eleanor Evans is also here. Eleanor?
Eleanor was simply sitting in the blind spot, that's all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Eleanor Evans. I'm from San Diego Unified School District. I am the student that, um, Dr. Evers talked about. I am the student, I'm a product of California Public Schools, but I am a student that struggled with math through middle school and high school, and I want to say that the math component is excellent. I only wish that, my one regret about going from high school to college is that my friends didn't go with me. Okay? And the reason why was because they did not have the math background. Math, as you all know, is the gateway for college, for careers, and I would implore you to please, please support the Common Core standards in mathematics. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great. Thanks, thanks, Commissioners. And, and board members, I hope you'd, uh, join me in a round of applause for the Commissioners. Obviously, for those, those who are here today, but for everyone who served so ably, and, uh, uh, public service is often thankless, uh, and it is not very often heroic, and hopefully, we have, and will continue to provide the thanks, and certainly, the service was, was, and continues to be heroic, uh, in preparing, in preparing us to make the decision that's in front of us today. One second. Great. So, what I'd like now to do, board members, is to see if there are any clarifying questions that you might have. While you're thinking about that, I'd like to return to Greg Geeding's comments, if I might, for just a second, and see if I can remind the board of the task that's before us today. I think that Greg put it very well, so I'm really simply reinforcing points that he made. I think that it's critical, as we take this up, to differentiate between what we're being asked to do today and what we're not being asked to do today, and by extension, what we as a board and we as a department and the legislature will be asked to do in the future. Because I think that differentiating between those will provide us with a, a way of, uh, making a decision in a world that's actually very complex, but a world in which we're taking one bite today. So let me see if I can, again, emphasize some of the points that, that Greg made. First, by talking about what we're not being asked to do today. So I think critically, we are not being asked to determine grade-level curriculum, courses, materials, or assessments. Those are all steps in the process that, if we begin it today, will take place in, in an orderly fashion, uh, where we will be involved at each step of the way, but those are steps that we're not being asked to take today. We're not, even more specifically, being asked to array the proposed standards within grade levels. Many of our colleague superintendents are here today, and, and they, they will tell you that, that, that even after the frameworks are established, that's important work that they engage in, uh, with, with their, with their teachers. We are not, and this is Greg, uh, thank you so much for making this point, we are not being asked to step back, repudiate, or throw away our current standards or our system of accountability. That when we think about an implementation plan, we need to be very clear with ourselves and the field that the current standards are in place, that there's a transition to new standards, that there is work to be done on, on the blueprints, work to be done on materials adoptions, work to be done on assessments, and that when that work is completed, and only then, will the state transition, uh, to a system based on, uh, Common Core, if we choose to, to take that, uh, take that step today. Further, we are not being asked to redesign professional development for teachers, teacher certification for entry-level teachers, nor are we being asked today to, to connect the Common Core with, with, um, any of those kinds of teacher professional evaluation that we've talked about in other areas of our work. So if that's not what we're being asked to do today, what is it that we are being asked to do today? And here, the legislation is very specific, as are the usual ways that we operate as a board and as a system. What we are being asked to do is to adopt or reject the academic content standards that have been proposed to us. If we do so, we begin the process that Greg talked about. We begin the process of unfolding blueprints that will operationalize, uh, these standards in the lives of teachers and kids. We unfold the opportunity to create new assessments, uh, new materials adoptions programs, and for those of us who've been around, uh, this particular set of decisions for a while, uh, we know that that means that we'll be seeing more of Tom Adams, uh, as, as he, as he, as he walks us, walks us through that work. But, members, as we go through, uh, our decision-making process today, I implore you, and will probably do so several times, I implore you to remember that that work, that critical, important work, is tomorrow's work, not today's work. Questions?
If I may. First of all, I was very happy to hear Greg refer to the great work that was done in nineteen ninety-seven, uh, with our California, uh, standards. And I was also very pleased to note that, uh, have you note that, uh, our California standards have been the ba, were part of the basis of the national Core standards. It's a major, major step, and because we did that in nineteen ninety-seven, it allows us, a different board, different people, but the Board of the, of Education for the State of California, a comfortable, uh, place in order to accept this, knowing, as Ted has said, that we have a very, very long road ahead of us. And that is, in every aspect of it, it's like telling your teenage daughter you can go out on a date, and then, somewhere down the line, she's going to get married and have a family, because that is, we're at the very beginning of something. I appreciate the fact that Commissioners have disagreed, as well as agreed, with the math standards, but I also am a great believer that, uh, from way back in graduate school, that if you set high standards, you will teach to high standards, and it will happen. I mean, I have been pleased in my many visits to schools over the years as a board member to have seen classrooms where teachers have been trained and teach the state's standards in their classes, in their classrooms. Very different from the days when I was a teacher and I didn't even know what a curriculum was, and it was in the bottom drawer, I think, on the right. Uh, so, and inventing my own way. But I am, I am comfortable with this first step. I am also comfortable with the fact that, uh, it has been, that there are thirty states that have agreed to this, and that a great portion is, was done through California. I appreciate Sue's work, and I look forward to seeing what this board and this office and this state is going to do to make this, uh, a reality in the future, so... and this state is going to do to make this a reality in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Bloom. And just as a reminder to board members, I hope that we could use this as an opportunity to ask some clarifying questions. We've, we've got quite a lineup, Nick and I were conferring, quite a lineup of people who would like to provide public comment. I want to turn, turn to that and, in, in just a minute so that we can hear from the public and then move to take action. Are you all right with that? Okay, that's, David, are you all right to turn to? Great. So I'd like to now turn to public comment. We, we have over twenty-five people signed up for public comment. And given, given the hour, and Mr. Superintendent, I know we've got a clock to watch. I would love, love members of the public to keep their comment in this instance to, to one minute. Beth?
The first three are Arun Ramanathan, I'm sure I, I, Ramanathan, I apologize. Sherry Griffith and Shelley Krieger.
Great, thank you. Good morning, Arun.
Good morning, State Board President Mitchell, Superintendent O'Connell, and members of the State Board of Education. My name is Arun Ramanathan, and on behalf of the, of my colleagues at the Education Trust West, I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. While we realize that there are many important issues before you, none is as closely watched as the decision on the Common Core standards and the commission's recommendations. California has long been a leader in both standards and assessments. We at the Education Trust West have long been advocates for increasing the rigor of our standards and graduation requirements.
Thirty seconds?
With the goal of ensuring that all of our high school graduates have a true choice between college and career. We have consistently highlighted the opportunity and achievement gaps that prevent so many students of color and students in poverty in our state from achieving college and career readiness. And over the past eight years, we have pressed you consistently to close those opportunity and achievement gaps.
One minute?
And live up to the promise of our rigorous standards. While we understand that the adoption of the Common Core will not by itself close those opportunity and achievement gaps, we do believe that adoption of the Common Core and the commission's recommendations is an important step in the right direction. First and foremost, the Common Core were built upon a clear determination of what students need to know by the end of high school in order to be college and career-ready. Second, the college and career standards are benchmarked against international standards. And third, by focusing on depth instead of breadth, the standards present a true pathway and a true promise for our students of color and students in poverty in the state of California. As a result, we do hope that you adopt the Common Core, and we do hope that you take the commission's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for making the trip here today.
Good morning, board members. Superintendent O'Connell, Sherry Griffith with the Association of California School Administrators. We are absolutely thrilled and pleased to support the recommendation of the commission, both with the Common Core and the strengthening through California-specific standards. Our position is twofold. One is that we strongly support the Common Core and the California-specific standards. And secondly, AXA has made as one of its highest priorities a comprehensive, fully-funded implementation plan of Common Core if you adopt today. We commit to that over the next five years. We believe it's critical for stakeholders and policymakers to, in a collaborative fashion, work closely together. We want to commend the stellar work of the commission. You would be so proud of these educators. We were there witnessing firsthand their work, the stellar work of Sue Stickel and her staff. It was just a phenomenal experience. We had to bring sleeping bags, I think, almost a couple nights. But it was excellent. I think what you'll see in the recommendations is not only the strength of Common Core, but where these content experts took it further in ELA, where they added what we needed in formal presentations. In math, for the first time, and so historic, that we're going to have eighth-grade Common Core math standards and Algebra I as an option. Think about this, our administrators will no longer have to relegate kids to repeat sixth and seventh-grade standards. And as Kathy Gaither said, for the first time, you're going to have two options for college readiness. We are so proud. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I do, I do appreciate everybody working through their remarks in a sub-two-minute fashion. It's very helpful.
Well, then you'll be happy with me because I agree with what everyone has said except Bill Evers. I'm Shelley, I'm Shelley Krieger, and I flew up here today because I wanted to endorse your, encourage you to adopt these standards, and I thank you very much for your work.
Thank you very much, and thanks for making the trip.
Okay, the next three, if you'd line up in, so we can move through quickly, Doug McRae, Catlin Latimer, and Juan Godinez.
Good morning. I'm Doug McRae, a retired test publisher from Monterey and a veteran of the War of 1997 over California content standards. I'd urge a yes, comma, but vote. And I must say that I've heard a lot of the conversation regarding the comma, but. Part of it, because the comma, but in my urging, has to do with the implementation of them. Frankly, you're under the gun with $700 million potentially on the table, and that's a practical, a practical matter. When the family is hungry, there is a responsibility to put food on the table, and so I understand that. The, on the merits, the standards commission recommendation, especially for math, looks like a horse designed by a committee with an unknown number of humps, not unlike a camel. The content standards need to have a strong horse, you've talked about this, capable of pulling five standards-based carts. Curriculum frameworks, instructional materials, professional development, assessments, and accountability systems. The content standards as they currently exist are not ready to pull those carts. There's a D.C. policy wonk that said that the common, the rush to Common Core standards this summer is not unlike joining a fitness club. A lot of claims for benefits before the first workout or the workout schedule has been determined, et cetera. That's all the stuff that's in front of you. And so I, I go ahead and urge you to do it, but do pay attention to the implementation issues. There are some major implementation issues that may need revision of the standards before you can do them. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Good morning. I'm Catherine Latimer, President-elect of the California Mathematics Council. And to the point, California Mathematics Council endorses the recommendation of the Academic Content Standards Commission for adoption of the augmented Common Core standards. We feel that the newly recommended standards provide an opportunity for K8 students to build a solid foundation with experiences in mathematical thinking that lead to stronger and deeper understanding with math, of mathematics. A few argue, argue that the recommended standards will not prepare students to take Algebra I in eighth grade. CMC disagrees. In primary grades, these standards emphasize numer sense and other foundational skills critical for success in mathematics. Many students who struggle in mathematics, in, struggle in algebra are weak in these skills. And that creates a poor understanding of important topics. It's important that students are successful the first time they take algebra. CMC supports the commission's recommendation that generates opportunities for success at grade eight. Algebra, as well as grade eight standards. While some may see this as tracking, CMC sees this as an alternative to repeating courses. So we do stand firmly behind the standards as, as augmented and presented. Finally, we'd like to congratulate the members of the Academic Content Standards Commission for their commitment to improve education and know that the California Mathematics Council stands ready to support all aspects for successful implementation of these Common Core standards. Thank you.
Thank you very much.